Turn it over to Steve first, if you can read the statement that was put out recently on behalf of our schools.
Thank you, Patrick. I do want to share, first of all, it was just, I felt it was really important that Drew and I did add our voices to the many voices speaking out. I do want to share in that the letter I'm going to read to you is a little modified. There were some ways that I thought the first letter missed the mark, so I have edited a little bit just to make sure I emphasize some of the things that we were trying to, some of our goals in the letter. So this is what we sent to our families and our schools. "We write this letter in support of our Black families and in recognition that recent national events involving violent acts of racism are painful to witness, especially to our Black families. This spring, we worked with the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee to create a mission and vision statement that was reflective of the purpose and goals of the committee. The opening of that statement reads, 'Exeter School District is dedicated to creating and sustaining inclusive school community where all families are welcomed and valued. In order to be a place where families feel welcome and valued, we cannot remain silent when these events have such significant impact in our community. We have a shared responsibility to work toward a better tomorrow where we foster positive social identity, a focus on empathy, and social justice. We encourage our families to take the time to have a thoughtful conversation about race and identity. Conversation with kids about race and racism are too often shushed or stopped altogether. Engaging in these conversations is essential in ending discrimination.'" In this quick three-minute episode of NPR and Sesame Workshop's podcast for parents, experts discuss the importance of talking to kids about social identity, and we connected a link to that workshop. "We hope you find this podcast and article helpful. We want all of our children to build a positive sense of identity and a healthy respect for other people's identity. And then sincerely from both myself and Mr. Berstow."
Okay, I wanted to say, before we enter into a moment of silence, a short statement. "As people of all ages and races are taken to the streets and within their communities to demand justice for the murder of George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, Walter Scott, Eric Gardner, and so many other Black men and women, we take this moment of silent recognition and reflection to start our Exeter Board meeting. And if we can take a minute just to reflect and recognize the recent events, that's how we'll start." Thank you.
Thank you very much, Patrick. All right, great comments. Thank you, Steve. We all share your sentiments. Is there any public input? Esther, did anyone join?
No, I have no public in the participants list.
Okay, Sarah Edwards, you're up.
Well, this evening, I'm taking a moment to recognize the teachers who are retiring from Main Street School and Lincoln Street School and our preschool. And as a board, we're so thankful for the teachers' commitment to our students, to our whole community, and the many years that they have spent in our schools educating our children. And so the board wanted to recognize them by reading their names and their most recent position at the school, and I'm really delighted to be able to be the person to recognize them. So the first up is Sandra Blumenthal, who is a fifth-grade teacher, Helen Burnham, our library media specialist, Bill Callahan, our fifth-grade teacher, Beverly Pericchio, our band and instrumental teacher, Nina Blyzeron, our second-grade teacher, Catherine Barrows for the first grade, Janice Bastiel, our Title I reading and math teacher, Lynn Bova, a preschool and special education teacher at the Exeter Developmental Preschool, Mary Jo Gregg, a second-grade teacher, Denise Griswold, reading and math interventionalist, Rita Jacobs, our first-grade teacher, Deb Watson Kimbo, a special education case manager, Colleen Nolan, a reading and math interventionalist, and Denise Raisin, the nurse at Main Street School. And we wish everyone the best in their retirement and wanted to take a moment to thank them personally.
Thank you very much, Sarah. Very well said. Thank you. All right, Esther Esbel, you're next.
Excuse me, Neil, sorry, there was a PTO update, even though Allison was here. Did she reach out? Do you want me to read that now, or do you want me to wait?
My apologies. Now is great.
Okay, so she sends with regrets that she's unable to make it at this time tonight, that she has a prayer commitment. But she just wanted to let everyone know that there's a new treasurer onboarding in process. His name is Robert DeLorey. He has a rising first grader. They met at the bank this morning to remove Valerie, the outgoing treasurer, from the banking info and to add Robert. Val is working with Robert to hand off her paperwork and other information. The PTO is exploring a possible virtual 5K over the summer. It's very early in the process. Nothing's set in stone at this point. USATF has refunded, the refund has been received for this year's canceled GFIM. They're the organization that maps out the race every year. They're not sure how that will impact the possibility of a virtual 5K if the USCAF still needs to be involved in that, so they're very early in the process. Other refunds have come in for unfortunate cultural enrichment programs that were scheduled after March 13th. There were some presentations that were able to switch to a virtual format. The PTO is committed to funding any cultural enrichment presentations that were able to switch to the virtual plan before the school ended for this year. They are also onboarding a new social media manager, Jennifer Gardis, and a new cultural enrichment coordinators. Kadeen Peterson and Meg Stagnone is in process. Allison will also be reaching out to the principals and assist principals shortly to schedule a call about fundraising for next year, and that's it.
Thank you, Sarah. All right, Esther, if you please.
Okay, good evening, everybody. We have firstly COVID-19 update, which is really nothing new, other than we're working on those four committees. Well, a couple of us have wrapped up all the reporting. I believe Dave wrapped up yesterday. And then in our SLT meeting tomorrow, we're going to try to figure out what the best way is to kind of organize that, to move forward, to work, to make a recommendation to the full Joint Board mid-July. So it's a lot, a lot of information, just my report alone of that stuff so far, as I think over 80 pages long with lots of PowerPoints. Everyone did a great job. So I do want to publicly thank everyone. There was about 100 people involved on those four committees. Just amazing reports, all cross-reference to research, and people did a really good job gathering that information for us. So thank you to everyone who participated, and we'll keep moving forward with that. Our other only big COVID-19-related update is that, as you may be well aware, we are having Exeter High School graduation on Saturday, all aligned with CDC guidelines. If you got to watch our drive-through with filming with Dr. Ryan, that spells it out very clearly. We'll send out another email out on Monday reminding guests and graduates what the guidelines are. Another reminder will go out Wednesday, a final one on Friday for the event on Saturday. Rich Kane and I are the logistics coordinator for the event, so that's taken a lot of time. We think we have it well under wraps, and it should go smoothly as long as everyone follows directions and does their best to stay within the guidelines. It's pretty tight. Everything's pretty tight, not a lot of leeway, and certainly not much to negotiate. So wish us luck. If you're not a parent, be thinking of us. The weather looks to be cooperating, so that's a good sign. And I will do our final dress rehearsal with all of our volunteers, not with students, but with our volunteers on Friday at noon. So that'll be our third practice session with our volunteers, so hopefully they're all prepared also. Those are the two big things related to COVID right now. The committee reports, as far as social emotional learning and mental health as related to COVID, I know later Dawn will do the committee for the SEL, but as related to COVID, we're working to get those DESA, that DEVERO screening up and ready to go about mid-September, which is about a month earlier than we normally do. We're working to get all those information in and organized so we can get it ordered. So Trish Raymond, who does all the loading of the classrooms for everyone, can have that up and ready to run. That's that universal screening for students for social emotional learning, so we're excited that we're ahead of the curve on that. We did get the CARES Act grant came online this past week. We have consultant Heather Murray, who was helping Chris and I write that. She worked for DOE and now has her own consulting committee. She's very familiar with the laws, et cetera, and just is helping us expedite the writing of that. So we're meeting, talking about that, and Drew and Steve, Steve doesn't know this yet, but gonna try to meet on Thursday at some point to review ideas they may have or needs they may have as related to COVID issues. What we have thought of so far that we're definitely putting in there is we're going to offer some SEL supports for students and parents over the summer. We're going to have six, up to six, school counselors, school psychologists, whoever decides to kind of apply for those, for a stipend to offer sessions for kids every other week, like a game session, some kind of social connection remotely for those kids that maybe don't have opportunities or aren't able to go out, get outside, and meet other children for a variety of reasons. We're going to offer some information sessions for parents, more about taking a positive aspect of how to deal with whatever the circumstances are, having to stay home, not have vacation, what can you do instead. And then another series for kind of an on-call, once every, once, one day a week for questions for parents, not an emergency on-call, but more, you know, my child, her appetite's changing, what, you know, what is that normal? What should I do? Do you have any resources for me? I had to help parents feel like they have a touchstone without having access to all the school staff. That's one thing that'll be in there, trying to support the social emotional needs of our students over the summer months. That'll run about, it's about, if there's about 10 weeks, we'll run five weeks of programming. Every week, there'll be something, either for parents or students. So that's, we're just beginning to flesh out what that will look like, but that's one of the goals for that money. You received, any questions on that? I'll pause and see if there's any questions on that.
Sounds like a great plan.
Awesome. Thanks, guys. I included your calendar for next year. As always, this can be changed. The most important thing I tried to lay out is the budget season, because those are, some of those are RSA-driven dates. And you can see, like the comments for the deliberative session, it has to be between 1:30 and 2:06. January 12th, all the petitions, meaning if there is any community petitions, they're due by 4:00 PM on 1/12, so it's nice to wait until that, because if you have a, the public hearing and then a petition gets filed, you have to have another hearing. So that's why I waited until, to have it after the final ones are due. It just saves an extra meeting if that is something that happens. So any questions on the calendar? Again, any suggestions for changes, additions, deletions?
I have something written to the calendar. I saw that at the moment, all the start times are listed at 5:30. I know that's what we voted. But I, I personally, I'd rather not have it be a 5:30 start time if we're not remote. I know that we don't know that yet, but I'm wondering if we could have a discussion about that, whether it's now or in a little bit, about if we are in person in the fall, and we'll know that by the summer, if we could have a vote that would say the start time will be X, back to 6:30. If it's, if it's remote, then it stays at 5:30. There's no need to make a change.
I don't know if we need a vote. I could just put on this draft that if the remote time is 5:30, and if it's in person, it's 6:30. So I could just change that column to affect both.
One way or the other about that, though. I think we just moved to change it, but I don't know if we specified whether or not it was only for the remote. I think that was part of the intention, because I know administrative, well, you Esther in particular, were having to stay late in a particular spot to be there. But if we're back to the regular time, it's going to be difficult for me to make it at 5:30.
So Dawn and Sarah and Patty, what do you think of that?
I'm in agreement with that. I would prefer 5:30 for remote, but 6:30 in person, given the work schedule.
Yeah, and that's, that works for me also.
Yeah, I'm flexible.
Me too. Sounds good. Thank you, Patrick.
Okay, I'll revise the calendar to reflect both options. Thanks, guys. Financial update and audit update. I know Molly, you're with us. Why don't you give the update, and then I do have a general discussion after that, so.
Sure. I'm just sitting outside, because of course, the Amazon Prime guy shows up and my dog's barking. So for, I'm just sitting outside real quick. So for the audit update, we did receive the audit report. Oh, you can just leave it there this time. Sorry. For the, there was a few items that were noted in the audit report. The first is revenue, it has to do with the revenue in the co-op for food service, but we've corrected it for this year. It's how it was done last year. The fund balance policy has to be revised to include the GASB, all GASB requirements. So again, that's just a policy that needs revision. The next item was across every district in the SAU. We enter planned cost into ADS, but we've historically never entered planned revenue, and the auditors would like us to do that going forward. And the last item, they noted just a few things from the student activity funds where there wasn't approval. And Drew, it said by the principal, and Drew and I talked about this, it was one of the ones where Drew had sent you the information. It was regarding one payment. So again, that's a pretty standard audit finding across other districts as well. So all in all, the audit was very, very good, and it was very minimal finding. Did anyone have any questions on the audit?
What's, why the recognition of future revenue as opposed to just cost?
So your fund balance makes up of two sides, the revenue and expense. And historically, we've always just included the cost side of the house in ADS, and we've always calculated the revenue outside on Excel. And it was just a recommendation from them to include it in the financial system as well.
But is, was there any reason they flagged, is there, I mean, is that, does that create, did that create any problems they were trying to solve?
Nope. Nope. It was just a recommendation.
Thank you. Anyone else?
And then the other thing that was included in the financials, I don't know if you want to talk to Esther or I can, where we included, actually Gloria didn't send it out, but we're looking, Gloria sent to Esther and I, at a projected unreserved fund balance of a little over $1 million. It's actually 1.171. So we, it's a little bit higher than last time, and so we might want to think about certain things. I know last year, we gave back $511,000. I know you have a meeting next week to talk about budget. I don't know if we want to address that here or next week.
Yeah, I'd just like to make, bring to the boys' attention that with $1,171,693.93 estimated fund balance as of today. It was brought to my attention today. I had a meeting with Richard Pratt, our tech coordinator. And as you know, I asked both principals to come up with the costs for going one-to-one because of our remote anticipated, in some vein, some remote next year. They've done that. Unfortunately, our meeting on June 16th to make decisions on that particular one issue is fine to wait. I just want to make the board aware that it looks like there'll be a $30 per unit increase unless your order is in by June 15th. Again, Richard just told me that today, which for us would be about $19,000 if the board chose to get all the units for both schools to go one-to-one. So I just would like to review the board, and each Steve or Drew, please chime in, what those costs would be, and then open it up for a conversation or discussion. Again, I know the budget conversation for fund balance is next week, and it's obviously entirely up to the board, but I didn't feel it was fooding for me not to bring this to your attention if we miss the order date by one day. So I'll give you the information, and then we all, you all can discuss it. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Would you like me to proceed, I guess, with this information, or would you want me to hold off until the 16th?
Do you want to discuss this now? No, let's get the numbers down, don't you think?
Yeah, I think we should ask it now and what the numbers are before and after the 16th.
Yep, okay. So with Drew, they've put in all the replacement costs, charging replacement teacher Chromebooks, because some teachers' Chromebooks were inadequate to continue, and a more remote instruction. So there's 25 of those. This is for Lincoln Street. And then some replacements due to loss this last time, this last session, as well as going one-to-one. So overall, for student Chromebooks, it would be 232 Chromebooks. These are the E300 series, which do have a touchscreen. So for our kids, that seems to be useful for them versus a non-touchscreen. Those units, along with the teacher units, which are the upgraded Chromebooks, which are right around $600 apiece, these do include a $23.99 per unit Chromebook license, which you have to have, as well as a $4.20 per unit content filter. And that's so when kids take those home, the school can filter what they can access, which obviously, particularly at the elementary school, is very important, and we felt like that was a priority. So overall, the total cost, and make sure I say this right, Drew, because I have a bunch of things circled from talking with you today, I believe is $123,923. Is that correct, Drew? So I rounded that to 124, just for purposes of conversation. Any questions on the Lincoln Street proposal? The Main Street proposal is very similar. The only difference is for kindergarten, there are iPads instead of Chromebooks. As Steve has had the conversation earlier with the board, that the kindergarten-age students seem to do much better with an iPad versus a Chromebook. Same series of the Chromebook, that E300 series, so that also has a touchscreen. The iPads do come with what's called Apple Care, which means they will replace anything broken two times for students. So if the screen is broken, et cetera, they will replace it at no cost. Again, the $4.20 for the content filter and for the Chromebooks, the $25.99 for the license per unit. So that total, Steve, can you help me out what that total was? Because I don't think I have the right number on my sheet.
I'll tell it, then you can hear what I say. Did you include the request for some of the teacher replacements as well? I didn't, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that was, I think it was for, for.
Four Macs and 12 Dell laptops for a total of $18,000.
So the grand total there, Steve, was what?
So I had, I didn't have 12, I had 10, so it's slightly different. But so that would put us at, I had $168,547.
Okay, I had $169, so that's why I've circled, so that matches. But do we need to add two more into that, Steve, Renee's review?
If you're adding two more.
Dells?
Two more Dells, that's another $2,050, so that would be $170,600.
So the $123.9, or I rounded to the $124, plus the, would you say $176?
$171, right?
Rounded, yeah.
The $171 plus $124 is $295. So I would propose to the board the overall savings on that, if I take the, just doing this, because again, just learned this today, so I apologize for, I have a bunch of notes, but I don't want to say, just in case I want to double-check. If I take the 232 student ones from Lincoln Street, Main Street, your total for students is? 223, is that right, Steve?
235 for the Chrome and 160 for the iPads.
So if I take that, that total, and I times it times, they said it would be anywhere from $15 to $30 per unit increase after June 15th. If I take the 15, the lowest one, it's a savings of $9,400. If they went 30, obviously that would be double, so right around $19,000. So that's why I bring it to the board tonight, not tomorrow, not next week. As Molly mentioned, our fund balance, unassigned fund balance right now is $11,171,693. Remember, $75,000 of that must go to Special Ed Trust per the warrant off the top of that. So I opened it up for a conversation for the board and any questions you may have.
Just so you know, last year, we gave back $511,000. And so in order to not see significant swings in the tax rate, you might want to consider keeping what you give back in line with that. Because the following year, if that, if you give back less than the $511,000, when you go back to having to raise more, that's when the tax rate swings, you'll see whether, how far you deviate from that $511,000.
Thank, thank you. Folks, what, questions, comments? Anyone wants to start? I'll start with, Patrick, go ahead.
Patrick had his hand up.
Goodbye, Patrick.
Well, I get really nervous about having these discussions without having all the information in front of us. There's, I think the only, to me, the only responsible way to make these decisions is to have an understanding of what all the requests are. So it makes me wonder, is there a way to reschedule the budget workshop to make it happen prior to the deadline? I just think, I really don't like it when we make these decisions in a piecemeal fashion, because I don't know how to prioritize this request with other requests that might be coming. And I, and you know, and how that fits in with what kind of money we want to give back. And I, and you know, and how that fits in with what kind of money we want to give back or not. That's why we set aside a time to do that. And I know that you can give me a ballpark number potentially, but we really need to look at each of those individual things, have the principals walk through and talk about why each one is important and then reflect on it, make a decision. I understand that there's a deadline coming up. We don't have a lot of time to reschedule because we have to give, we'd have to give notice. But I would, I would propose potentially rescheduling the budget workshop to move it up if it's going to potentially save us some money.
So I just would like to add that there's nothing else on the principal's wish list, given the size of this request. This is the only items on their wish list. The other item that we were going to bring forward for consideration was perhaps can have the board consider paying out all or some of the retiree costs that are built into next year's budgets to allow some flexibility in next year's budget of expenses that may come up due to COVID. So just so people are aware, the principal list, this, this is the principal list for this year because it's such a high ask.
Okay, it just, it's going to lead to, I can tell you when we start to talk about this, it's going to lead to questions that I have. Because I've heard when I sat the safety committee meeting that there is a discussion about a need for thermometers for these, to way to be able to check, do temperature checks of all kids. And it was a piece of equipment that we didn't have, we're potentially going to need to buy. You know, there may be other things that come up. And maybe, maybe we just have this discussion now and our workshop is, you know, in the middle of our agenda and we have it for 20 minutes. I don't know. But I just, however we're going to do this, my preference would be that we just do it in a complete way. We don't do part of it now and then part of it next Tuesday. I just don't, the way to go about making decisions.
Okay, thank, thank you. Others?
Patty has her hand up.
Yep.
You know, considering Esther clarified that this was really the only thing on the list of items that the principals would, would ask for us at the end of the year, I just don't think we have a choice. If we continue to do remote learning, this is essential to making that happen and hopefully improving the, you know, the remote learning experience. Or if we go back to school, I don't know. I would, I would gladly approve this tonight.
Okay, thank you. Sarah or Dawn?
Excuse me, Neil. Molly has her hand up.
Sorry, thank you. I can't see that.
I just wanted to add what Esther was saying and what Patrick was saying where there's other things with the unknown with COVID. So where Esther brought up the only other thing is the retirements, that's a little over $500,000, I believe, Esther. Now that's already in the plan for next year. So if we do move that from next year to this year, you're freeing up that space next year to buy the unknowns with COVID, whether it be thermometers or masks or what. So that's why I wanted to make that point. So there are certain things that we might need in COVID. But by bringing the retirements into this year, you're freeing up space for next year to buy those items.
Did you say that that was 500,000 for the retirement?
Um, I believe Gloria worked it up. So it'd be 500, 523,276 and 76 cents. So 523,277.
But if, so if we did both one to one in the retirement, we would increase taxes, right?
No, so you wouldn't necessarily be increasing taxes. You just wouldn't be giving back as much.
Okay.
And so with that, I was doing some rough math as we were talking before. If you did both, it looks like you'd be giving back 276,000 if you went all in on the retirements. But again, you don't have to go all in on the retirements. You, like Esther was saying, you can determine how much you want to give back and adjust how much we put towards the retirements this year.
Okay. Dawn?
Yeah, I sort of just want to go back to sort of Patrick's point at the beginning. I completely agree. This is, we need to have a budget workshop to talk about all of these pieces together. I, there are so many little pieces that go along through this that we, you know, need to talk about. What if we do go back to school? Do we need all of these, these Chromebooks and iPads and all this? I just think it's a larger discussion than to try to have right here in the middle of this meeting. I would like to make a motion to reschedule the budget workshop to as soon as possible.
Okay, do you want to make, would you mind if Sarah and I talk before you make your motion? Is that okay? Sarah?
I'm in agreement that it's really important to consider all the options and that a more comprehensive discussion is really important. Given that, I think that as someone who thinks about access to education for our students, it seems like the Chromebooks and the iPads are central to providing a resource to students who otherwise wouldn't have access in a remote learning situation. And that there are other pieces of the budget that could be critical. But as the principals point out, that's the most important. So I would support, you know, a change in the budget meeting. But if we can't get enough people to do that, I'd like to hear from the principals about their interest in this expense.
Okay, so let me, let me share a couple of thoughts and then maybe I'll ask, if you don't mind, Steve and Drew to chat. So, so you know, the school has taken a look at what they need and they've looked at this closely. And there's nothing about the current circumstance that says that we need anything other than more technology. Private sector, public sector, plans are accelerated across the board. And I agree that we should take a fine tooth comb when necessary and possible. But there's exigence involved, right? So we want to save not a small chunk of change for the voters. And I trust that Steve and Drew and Esther, this is all tightened up. So I'm good with this. I really, doing just this one measure tonight, I am. So let's, let's talk about that. Let's talk, what do you, what do you guys want to do now? Dawn, you said you wanted to make a motion. You want to make it?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to reschedule the budget workshop to as soon as possible so we can make a really good, informed, educated decision.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Don Ballance?
Aye.
Sarah Edwards?
Aye.
Patrick O'Day?
Aye.
Patty Saret?
Aye.
Neil Blaken is no. Motion passes. All right, let's reschedule. Esther, can you schedule? Do you have a, do you want to propose some dates when we can meet before the deadline?
I'm going to be honest, with graduation on Saturday. This week is very, very tight. I have Stratum Board tomorrow evening and their budget conversation. I am more flexible on during the day. I'm booked already Thursday with another meeting Thursday evening. The 12th is dress rehearsal for graduation. Graduation is the 13th. Can do it Sunday, the 14th. So unless we could do something during the day on the 11th, or I don't have to be there. I mean, the principals are more than capable with Molly of having this conversation.
I would suggest maybe the Sunday, the 14th. I think we need to have enough time to give notice to this as well, right? I think is the minimum 24 hours? But Esther, you know, the minimum amount of.
24 hours per posting, yes.
So we could still do something on the 11th then, is that right? I just, I can't do it during the day. I, I'm not available during the day at all. Do it in the evening, but not during the day.
I cannot do June 11th. There's, there's a meeting, it's a planning board meeting related to a development in my neighborhood. Quite significant. I wish I could do it, I can't. Anyone else have any?
Yeah, can we, well, we can have a meeting in the evening, even if Esther's unable to make it. I'll put myself available any night this week.
I can't do it tonight. I can't do it Wednesday night. I can't do it Thursday night.
Okay.
I can do Friday night. I prefer candidly not to, but I'll do it.
If I'm not there, which I will not be Friday night, I don't know if the principals and Renee, I obviously, there are three components as well as, I don't know if Deanna has certain issues that she could convey to Drew. If she couldn't make it, or Beth to Steve, I just, I don't know. I'm just asking.
Sarah and Patty, any thoughts?
I'm fine. I'm pretty flexible, so I'm just trying to pay respect to those who want to do this meeting. You know, whatever works for you guys.
Sarah?
Friday night does not work for me due to a family commitment. So there's no way we could have an early morning meeting, even on Monday, the 15th?
I can't, I, I can't. I gotta work.
And then it's too late because the order has to be placed on the 15th.
Neil, when would you be available?
Saturdays of the week, the weekends, not during the day, the day's tough.
Not during the day on the weekend?
Yeah.
Okay, so Saturday or Sunday evening?
Can I, can we step back for a second and think about what we're asking our readers? Like a Saturday and a Sunday after a long week? I mean, that's, we ask Steve and Drew, please, what their availability is? I'm looking at my schedule. Just give me one second here.
Yeah, as dynamic and as exciting as my life is, I can make whatever time you need.
Friday night, I have a family commitment. And the other nights are okay? Yep. So I can't make Tuesday, Wednesday or Thursday. Right, I'm here Tuesday, right, Wednesday or Thursday. I can do Friday, he can't do Friday. Any chance we could re-discuss this today? And any chance we could just like knock this out? Anyone?
Well, I can do Saturday and Sunday. We've, I mean, we've already made a motion, Neil, that we passed. I understand that you voted against it, but it's, that's, that is what we asked to do is to try to reschedule this if we can make it work.
Patrick, if we can't make it work, then we have to revisit, right? If people can't attend, I mean, how many people need to attend? The principals.
Can we make it both of them?
The stranger.
Make it on Saturday or Sunday. Is, can other people in this group make it? I've heard Neil said he can make it on Saturday or Sunday. I will make myself available on Saturday, Sunday. Dawn said she'd make herself available. It's, it will really ultimately the principals and the board are the key people. If Esther can't make it, she can communicate.
Do you think it's asking a little too much to ask people to take their weekend time for this?
Sorry, just to be respectful, but for $300,000, I do. I think.
$19,000.
What's that?
I mean, I think it's, it's either $9,000 or $19,000 because that's the amount if we file the request for computers on Tuesday rather than Monday.
Okay, but we also have to approve to file it for the computers. It's not, we have to talk.
Well, I mean, that's the additional cost, right? If we have, if we have the meeting on the day that it's scheduled, it only impacts our budget by either 9,000 or 18,000, which is significant. That's a whole bunch of computers we could buy. But again, I asked if, and I don't know if this is the appropriate time since there's a motion. But I also, when I spoke, asked if we could hear from the principals very briefly about their feeling about the priority of this.
That's a good idea. Is that all right, Stephen, Drew?
Yep, I can jump in if you want.
Yes, please.
So the, the question was the, I guess, the choice and the purpose and behind the decision to go to one to one computing. And I just, in terms of Sarah, like you were saying, the equity and access piece and in terms of consistency of instruction and, you know, I think about some of the biggest complaints that we had during remote instruction was when siblings had to share devices in their homes. If, you know, the family only had an iPad or, you know, it was a work computer. And so the parents were sharing the work computer with, with their kids. And obviously everyone, you know, everyone needs to work. Everyone needs, kids need to do their school. So it created stress and frustration in a lot of homes. And then, so I mean, ultimately, it's, it's sort of a safeguard for the possibility of remote instruction again. But it will also enhance and benefit instruction within the school. Having everyone have, you know, a device that they can access. I think the staff have acquired a number of skills and tools, I guess, that are inevitably going to be embedded in their classroom instruction now, once we do go back into the classroom. So I think that this, having one to ones within the school will be able to enhance, you know, what the kids are doing any, any given day in the classroom.
Thank you. Steve?
You know, I would have to echo a lot of what Drew said. The one thing I would say is that, you know, if we were going to return the way which we hope we, we are going to be, you know, hopefully we'll be back in person to become less important. But reality is that if we get a spike, even if we have to be up for two or three days, our students will need access to technology. So it's, it's unfortunately become more of a reality for us that the possibility of remote learning, certainly within this year especially, is more real. Hopefully it'll be limited. But certainly the advantage that Drew spoke about are there. Can we, could we make do without? Yeah, of course we'll make do without what we did before. But there are a lot of advantages and it does prepare us well for what is already a challenging situation.
Steve can ask, did your request include anything for the preschool?
The.
Or is there not a need for it?
I believe we would have enough devices here to cover the preschool in terms of the iPads. But it wasn't, it wasn't specific. It was when I put a quote together, I put it for a very large kindergarten class. Right now, our class, our class does not indicate that need. But so there would be extra iPads available for the preschool, but it wasn't as part of this.
Right, probably a stupid question on my part. Thank you. All right, what have you guys?
Neil?
Yep.
I think with the motion on the table, it seemed like I'm just writing everyone's comments down that maybe Sunday night, the 14th, could work.
Okay. Folks?
I can make it Sunday night. Drew and Steve? Steve, you said you, Drew, could you make Sunday evening work? Renee?
Sunday works for me.
Beth and Deanna, if you want to attend, that's your choice. Or you can communicate anything to Drew and Steve. That's up to you.
I'm happy to communicate for her.
I think all the board members could do a Sunday night, is that right?
Yes.
Yes.
I just wasn't sure what time, whether it was the 5:30 time or what people were thinking.
I'm flexible.
I'm flexible.
I would propose earlier time at like 5 o'clock. So we could go 5 to 6 and be done. That is, that's like a very big family time for us.
Right.
And I would prioritize this, but if we went 5 to 6, that means that I could rejoin my family then. So I think 5 o'clock.
We'd rather start late afternoon, like a 4 o'clock. Does that work better for folks? If you're, if you're concerned about interfering with the evening time, dinnertime and other things?
4 would be fine. 4 o'clock would be good.
How about Esther, would you guys be able to make 4?
Yes.
Steve and Drew?
Yep.
I like the 4 o'clock time because then it doesn't interfere with the evening. It gives you most of the day. You take a little break for this and it doesn't, it doesn't take up the whole evening as well.
Steve, can you make 4?
Yes.
All right. Sunday, 4 o'clock. How does that sound?
Good.
Esther, we send the invite out?
I will. So the invite I sent out earlier today, don't try to zoom in with that one. You'll, you won't get there. So I'll send you a new one tomorrow with the updated posting. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Q and A in general. Any more questions for Esther? I assume not.
I have a question for Esther. Esther, did you, did you see what the? Esther, did you, did you see what the Massachusetts governor put out about that schools can only reopen if it's classes of 10 or fewer students?
That, that's kind of where we're at now, just based on space. We're at 12 at the high school, just for space, but we're still at that group of 10 or less, so that applies to us also.
Yeah.
Until that changes to under 50.
Teachers or any other staff that are in there, I don't know how that even fits with special ed. It just seems like it starts to get really complicated. Someone has a one-to-one with them, does that up the numbers of who's in that class? I mean, just, boy, there's so much to think about with this.
Yes, there is.
But those, I, I know that the decision is going to be made, it doesn't involve this board per se, but, but when the decision is made, is there, is, are those reports that are being created, is that something we would have a chance to see? I think I've just listed them, all the work that's been done.
Right, we're in the process of, we just talked with Ellen Sargent and Sandra Blanc today, our two tech people. They are going to rebuild the COVID-19 resource page into now return to school. It's going to take a couple of weeks. And so as they do that, we'll streamline and organize the material from each group. And then everyone will be able to go on there and look as, at as much every presentation that was presented in all the committees or kind of the summary. So it'll be really what, what the people want, how far you want to look. But yes, that is all going to be accessible to everyone through a return to school webpage.
Anyone else? Moving on, have you guys had a chance to look at the minutes?
Yes, and I have some suggestions or corrections.
Do you want to do this all at once or do you want to do, let's do one by one? How about the public board minutes? Anyone? Is that yours, Sarah?
No, mine's about the committees.
Anyone?
To those. Under five, instead of listing the exact corrections that we make, I would, because that just seems to perpetuate information that wasn't said at the first meeting. And then it gets put into the next set of minutes. And so instead of listing it that way, I would propose the following for number five. Approval of the minutes, April 14th, 2020 board meeting, Mr. O'Day proposed amendments to number two. Mr. Blaken proposed amendments to number 7.1 and 10.1. To replace that entire paragraph.
Okay, anyone else have thoughts about that? Is that all right? All right.
We usually take those notes just for correction purposes, but they don't have to go into final minutes.
Okay. Well, thank you.
I'm sorry, what were you saying? You're just saying that, that you're listing it just so that we can see it, but it would.
Because I don't, I don't actually make the corrections. Marcia actually goes through and makes the final version of the minutes that you approve. So I'm just making those as notes to her, so those don't need to be part of the public record if you, I don't think.
Yeah, I, I agree, but it, but it's now ended up as part of the proposed minutes for the May 12 meeting. Even though we were correcting the minutes from the April meeting, the, the corrections we were making are ended up in the, it, it could end up being in there all year long. We sort of kept it this pattern, so I don't think that was the intention, but anyhow, that's, that's how I suggest that we change it, but there's another way to do it, that's fine.
All right, any other changes? All right, let's vote to approve as amended, right?
I'm sorry, I did have comments about the committee assignments.
Go ahead.
So it has, the SAU policy was Patrick and Patty, but it's Patrick and me, Sarah Edwards. So Patty and put my name. And then I didn't know if we were putting like an alternate. So Dawn, I was going to be the primary person for enhanced learning, but also Dawn.
The, I don't have my, my sheet in front of me, were there two, right? There are usually two for enhanced learning, right?
There's only one.
Yeah, so Dawn said she and I could.
Okay, so add one?
So one person, is that okay with you, Dawn, that we continue? Okay, because we had talked about that. And then my other question was about the joint chairs negotiation, because I believe I was not the only person. Is, and it is joint. I didn't know the title was joint chairs negotiation, but I believe that was Patrick and myself.
That's just, and that's just, you're right, good, that's a good catch. That's just negotiations. It should be changed to just negotiations, not joint chairs negotiations. And.
Because that's with our teachers' union and any of our K-35 Exter district. Okay. Okay, so it was the joint chair that we add Patrick, that we remove Patty from this SAU policy, replace it with myself. And that enhanced learning includes both Dawn, Bolins, and myself.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, I'll make a motion to approve as amended. Dawn Bolins?
All right, I'll, I'll second the motion.
Sorry, Dawn Bolins?
Aye.
Sarah Edwards?
Aye.
Patrick O'Day? Patty Soret?
Aye.
Neil Blaken is aye, all right, workshop minutes? Any amendments? Sir, did you have anything for this?
Nope, I'm good.
All right, does anyone have any for the non-public minutes?
Aren't really a lot of minutes.
All right, motion approved workshop non-public minutes as, as presented. That's my motion, anyone have a second?
I second.
Second, all right, Dawn Bolins?
Aye.
Sarah Edwards?
Aye.
Patrick, Patrick O'Day? Patty Soret? Patty, Patty Soret?
Aye.
Neil Blaken's aye. All right, non-public sessions, by the way, we have a brief non-public after this. We have to talk about a couple of things, we won't take very long. Nothing else, Mr. Adler, you are up. Sir?
All right, first of all, I just want to do a shout out to Chris Andruski. He's been working to really update the AMA reporting system. We got a lot of feedback, there was a lot of questions and confusions when we first rolled it out. And I really think Chris and, and the curriculum coordinators and our teachers have done a wonderful job updating it and, and that we're going to have a much more meaningful document for parents in the fall. They revised the language to make it more user-friendly. They revised the format, so the ICANN statements, which are more related to the standards, are aligned with the competencies. I think when parents see those changes, they'll be really pleased. And I do appreciate the efforts that both Esther and Chris made to really reach out to the public and get a lot of good feedback on that reporting system. We did send home Exeter summer 2020 resource package. The curriculum coordinator has put together that and just says a whole bunch of things that parents can do with their children to continue to support learning during the summer. Hopefully, a lot of them are fun and enjoyable ways for parents to learn with their children. One of the highlights for me personally was we had our final staff meeting on June 4th. It was a chance to recognize all of our long-term subs. We've had a number of long-term subs this year who've done a great job, as well as we had an intern. I do want to thank Stacy Hansen, Kim Albertelli, Erica Landers, who was our intern, Kendra Adams, and Laura Reichel, all of whom stepped forward and filled positions that they all did a terrific job, I was really pleased. Today, oh, and then we, at the final staff meeting, we did a trivia game on our retirees and then Beth led the staff in another virtual game. And we had end of the year celebration video as well. So it was, it was really fun to, we had, you know, something like 85 or 90 of the staff joined and it was just really nice to see everyone together. We sent out all of our end of the year narratives today to share about student progress, as well as share goals for the coming year, as well, and information from our specialists. And then teachers sent out videos using the Flipgrid application to their next year's students, which were really, I had a chance to observe, I haven't a chance to see all of them yet, the ones I've seen were excellent, and just welcoming students to their next year's class. So they, they learned on the narrative who their teacher would be. And then in the morning, and then they got a video from that teacher in the afternoon. Tomorrow and on Thursday, we will be collecting all of our library books and the technology that's not being used in the summertime will be returned. If parents need it for summer work, they are welcome to keep it. And then we'll be handing out, we have, the whole gym is filled with paper bags with student materials. I was so struck that all the time that went into organizing this, and you think at the end of the year, typically the kids just take a bag and get on the bus, but this is much more involved. And we will have parents driving up and they will have a sign that says their child's name or the children's name, last name being the most important, and then their teacher's name with that grade level. So if it was like second grade, Mrs. Brown, it would just say Two Brown. And they'll be driving on the right side of the school, going right along the small road that goes on the right side of the school, wrapping around to the, where the doors are to the gym, where we have the materials ready for them. And then they'll be driving straight through from there, out the front gate, right past where the staircases are. And lastly, just want to share that both Mr. Bearstone and I have been really conscious of recognizing the impact, which we did in our letter of the violent racial accidents shaking this country. And just again, we just felt it was really important to reach out, to especially support our children who are black and our, and our families who are black and, and just really provide that support. And I have, we have shared of a variety of resources for supporting conversations around race that we hope families will find helpful. It's been an unusual spring. And I really do applaud the staff and I applaud the Exeter families for just really dealing with a very difficult situation with just it's in the best way possible. That's my end of my report.
Thank you, Steve.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bearstone.
Yeah, and just, well, we're on the topic that Steve was just discussing. I can just jump in and give a quick diversity, equity, and inclusion update while we're on the topic, if you wish. The DEI committee is, is moving on. And as I spoke last month, we're in the process of planning for affinity groups next year for folks with similar backgrounds to talk about social justice and moving forward this work with. So I don't have a ton of details because we're still in the planning phase as far as that goes, but we're looking to have four different groups meeting to, you know, push forward for, for social justice. We'll also have amongst the DEI committee, there'll be some volunteers who have decided to participate in a book group, reading the book White Fragility. So there's a good, solid representation of folks that have decided to join on that. I believe Mariam Levy is going to be facilitating that book group. And then staff from Lincoln Street School and Main Street School. This is a challenging one because I believe the book is sold out in a lot of different places. But the book, How to Be an Anti-Racist by Ibram Kendi, that is going to be staff book talk over the course of the summer. So we're just doing our best to support the effort and, and show you know, that we care about folks that are affected by this. So my principal's report are, my principal's report is very similar to Steve's. A lot of similar updates. I will be peering through the bushes to watch how his pickup routine goes because his is next week and mine's on the 17th and 18th. So Steve, I thank you in advance that I'll be able to learn from your mistakes, not that there'll be many. And we have been working diligently the last few weeks on our placement process and getting those narrative end of year reports out to staff, they all just went out today, similar to Steve. He was more tech savvy than me by using the, your the video platform that you used, I already forgot the name of it, but our staff all made videos and, and all the parents and kids had access to that. I got some eager emails, you know, today, when, when are we going to get the videos? So that, the timing ended up working out pretty well though. So everyone has seen some really sweet welcome videos from our staff. So a big, big shout out to the staff for taking the time and introducing themselves in a non-traditional way, shall we say. And let's see. So the 17th, 17th and 18th, we're having our collections, so same system. We've, we've got our, we're going to have two different stations for folks to drive through to try and expedite the process. And, and so we have two different days. Parents will drive up from Main Street and split up. Some will be going to the basketball court behind the gym and some folks will drive up next to the, their third grade except with the ramp. And so we're hoping that is a smooth, smooth process. And a big, big news at Lincoln Street School recently is we had a tree planted back by our playground. You may have seen it in the news, it was a hot topic. So we, part of the Tree City USA Committee in town through the Arbor Day Foundation. So we were the recipients of a tree to help the town maintain the Tree City USA status. So it was very, it was, it's going to be a giant, gigantic tree, about 50 feet tall, 30 feet wide. Right now, it's obviously not quite that big, but it will provide plenty of, of shade in a really sunny spot. And not to mention, it'll give our green team something to care for and something to learn from in addition to sort of that connection to local government. So we're really appreciative of that. And yeah, in our staff meeting we just had on Monday to try and close out the school year, it was a strange atmosphere, you know, we had 80 people on a Zoom meeting and trying to have that same kind of connection between people when you're staring at them through a screen was a definitely a different experience. But we did our best to break out into small groups and, you know, provide some team building activities and come back together and, and, and share our appreciation for those that are, are leaving us. And we invited some of our new staff to our board and we had a chance to introduce them as well. It's very happy to see them. And those are the goings on at Lincoln Street School.
Thank you, Mr. Bearstone.
I have a quick question, Neil. Drew, I, I got added to the email list for DEI and I also got access to the drive, the shared drive, but I don't think I have the meeting link for, for the next meeting.
All right, we will get that to you.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Dawn?
What about enhanced learning? Is there an update on that, isn't that on the agenda?
I don't have an update for enhanced learning. We haven't, we haven't had a meeting.
All right, Dawn?
Okay, um, let's see, so facilities update. Patrick and I met with Esther and Rusty, a facilities director, regarding the request by the town to possibly use some spaces for Amtrak riders or store employees or, or owners or things like that. We kind of just talked to a lot of the concerns, questions, tried to see if there's any sort of way that we thought we might be able to make something work and to be good neighbors, to help out sort of the overflow, or sort of, I should say, the lack of parking and the overflow of sort of empty spaces we seem to continually have at Lincoln Street. That sort of prompted some more digging that Esther did for us and we just got a report back from her. Patrick, do you want to read that? Do you want me to read that? Or do you want to say anything else before I find that in my email here real quick?
Yeah, I don't have the report in front of me, but I know that she proposed to. Yeah, I don't have the report in front of me, but I know that she spoke those to the New Hampshire School Boards Association to sort of get their legal opinion as well as the liability carriers to, which is one of the things that as we were talking this through, we thought we should understand what kind of liability it might be exposing the district to, to take on this sort of good neighbor initiative. So that was the piece that she brought back.
Do you want to speak to it directly Esther? Or do you want me to read your notes? What do you think's better?
You can, you can read, you've got them nice bulleted and I have them.
So, um, obviously I'm just going to read it quickly. It says, she finally connected with the New Hampshire School Board Association Council and our insurance company, Primex. Initially, the executive director, Barrett Christina from the School Board Association. First thoughts were not crazy about the idea and there's a lot of risks that the board needs to consider, which I think we had already been sort of feeling that way. So that was sort of, sort of on board with that. So the next thing she did is contact Primex. She spoke with a Sandy Burrows, who's a liability contact at Primex. So the Sandy Burrows stated that the written agreement, if we were to enter into something like that, we need to carefully be created to consider such as items as identification spots, no removal, times of parking responsibility for damages, which I'm not sure that was something we had really thought about. And clearly outline all aspects of maintenance of the lot and the spaces and who would be responsible, the tower of the school. Some of that we sort of were, were working through as well. Is it something that, that the, the school or the school board even want, would want to venture into with the difficulty it may be with trying to keep track of it and whatnot. So we haven't gotten any further. That was the latest information, sort of the next steps would be whether the board wants to continue to explore this idea. You know, we have not met with the town officials since the proposal that they sent. You know, but, and then also we would probably need to have our own legal counsel to help consider how it could work out. And then there'd be some expense likely associated with that. So we haven't spoken together since these late, latest findings. So that's sort of where we're at right now. I don't know if anybody has any questions or things they want to add or, or.
Um, just to add in here from our meeting, I mean, we talked about a variety of different potential concerns. One of them was whether or not we need to do background checks on people that were given those parking spaces since they'd be on school property. Potentially, you know, close proximate to families and children and whatnot. So but then we started to go back and forth about that. Someone could also park on the street would, and there might be even closer to children. But we obviously don't monitor that. I think it's just because we are potentially, you know, we're, we're potentially monitoring it in some way that then it gives us responsibility. Well, we don't have that same responsibility when people park on the street. We're not monitoring that. We're not seeing who can park there, who can't park there. It's open to the public. But because it's our lot, and once you say only certain people could park there, we started to wonder out loud whether or not we need to be more careful about that. And that could be an administrative hassle, to say the least. There's going to be delays of, you know, several weeks to a month to get each individual background check. We, we just, there's a lot of issues that we still need to work through. That was just one of the issues. We spent quite a while trying to think through these issues. And there's, there's a number of them.
Any, anyone else? Don, Don and Patrick, what do you want from us?
I don't know if we particularly need anything tonight, this evening, if you will, just more of if people have, you know, I, I would say that it's, you know, there's empty space there. Do we want to sort of move further down this road to pursue it? I'm not really making a motion or anything, but if people have, you know, serious concerns about not doing it, it'd be great to hear that as well, so that we can just sort of see where our next steps might take us. The town hasn't been, I don't know if Esther, they've contacted you anymore. I mean, obviously everybody's not traveling to Boston right now or wherever. So it's, it's not as needy as it has been, but that will hopefully change at some point. So I think we still have a good amount of time.
Any, any other thoughts? Patty, Sarah?
Well, I would just say thank you for considering all of these different pieces in terms of being a friendly neighbor. It seems like given a limited amount of board time, that it's taking an enormous amount of your time and potentially needing legal services in order to make it work. So I wonder if the benefit is there based on how many complicated issues tend to come up? So that's all.
Thank you. Patty, and I, I would add that, I mean, it seems to me that, you know, we're remote now and I don't know exactly what's going to happen in the fall. But more space is better for our utility, you know, if there's, but you know, if you need, if you want to keep pursuing it, I don't object to pursuing the option. All right.
I, I have one other, sorry, quick comments about it now that you said about the fall. As a parent of someone who is unlikely to let my children go on the bus because of having a medically fragile child. I think other parents might decide that they would drop their kids off if they're going to send them to school. And I would just add that as a note that you might have a much higher percentage of parents needing to pull in and out of that lot to drop kids off or on Lincoln Street in the fall.
Also, all right, Donnie, is that good for you, Don?
Yeah, yeah, that's, those are good points. I think just to, just to, only just one last to say is, I think what we've, what they've seen or experienced is, and I drew it, correct me if I'm wrong, is upwards of 60 spots daily. So I think even when we were talking about this was sort of, it would be something scaled back, really scaled back so that we would still have a lot of flexibility, but maybe a lot, you know, relieve some of the pressure over there on Lincoln Street for, for parking. But.
You're right on that count. It's anywhere from like 60 to 72, I think was the highest I counted.
But then we talked about that there are special nights where the parking lot gets completely full and is overrun. And we'd also, Sarah, to your point, we, we weren't as concerned about board time because this is relatively limited in scope. But we were concerned about Steven Drew's time or, you know, or the other people on their staff. If it takes up a lot of administrative time to, you know, to, to go through this program, we want to be careful about that. You know, if that's, is that really our priority? We want to be careful. We don't add one more thing onto already busy schedules.
All right. Thank you all. Moving on, Sarah Edwards.
For negotiations, I'd like to request to be added to that committee email. I don't know, Patrick, if anything went out from last meeting to this meeting, I wasn't on, I wasn't notified. So I assumed nothing went out. But is there a person who manages that?
Yep. So Tom Campbell does. So we should make sure that he's aware that you and I are the two folks that are working with it. But we essentially really haven't met or discussed until right around the time, so probably since around March, right around the time when things were being fine tuned for the town vote.
All set, Sarah?
All set. Thank you.
Yep. Good day.
All right. So in terms of committee reports with the policy committee, the policy committee did meet, Sarah and I are on that. And this was, we're essentially alternating, it seems like informally. So this was one of the times when I was able to go and went. And we really only took up one policy, which is one that was talked about at the joint boards meetings. It's this school superintendent emergency situation CB-A. And, you know, we didn't pass it out in the packet tonight because I'm taking action, we're not asking our individual boards to take action. But that document was marked up quite a bit. It's already, it's much smaller than it was presented last time. And one of the pieces that's in here, I'm going to read this one little part to you to give you a sense. The board came up with one set of language and an alternate set of language. And I think the intention is that we're going to talk about this at the joint board meeting, which is tentatively June 15th, from what I understand. It hasn't been confirmed yet, but potentially coming up in a, you know, pretty quickly, actually. So there's this one party here at the end because the, the question was, what happens in terms of, you know, a sunset provision with this? And it says, in the event the joint board is unable to meet in the face of an emergency situation, the superintendent has the authority to make decisions that best meet the needs of the school district. Until a quorum of the joint board can be convened as soon as plausible, at which time the SEU joint board can either extend or extinguish the administrative authority. Okay. So in other words, it, it just continues until the joint board meets. And then they can, one, one proposal is that the board takes a vote to either extend it or extinguish it. The other proposal is the same language, except it says, at which time the emergency authority shall be extinguished unless a majority of the SEU joint board votes to extend that authority. So in other words, as soon as the SEU joint board meets, then that authority is, ends, as long as there's a quorum that's met, unless that board votes to extend it. So it's, it's two, it's two minor differences between the two. One, it automatically extinguishes as soon as the joint board meets. But it can be extended. The other, the, the board has to take a vote to either extend it or extinguish it. So the board, the, we can talk about that at the SEU joint board meeting, unless someone wants to talk about it now. But, but generally each of the boards were on board that we did need to sort of change the policy. We took out all the language about exigent circumstances, all that got crossed out. And it just said essentially, he has emergency authority, he or she has emergency authority when there's this void until the board can meet. Okay. So that was, I'm sorry.
Do you want something from us? Do we have to?
No, there's, there's no vote to be taken or nothing to be done. It's just, just information sharing right now. I think the intention is to have further discussion and try to refine which of those two directions on that one part of the language that is the will of the consensus. And then bring it back to the boards and take a formal vote.
So would you, so I do, the question I have is this, which is my understanding, which is not very good, that I thought the joint board's real job was, you know, to review the superintendent's, you know, tenure and all that stuff and hire and that, and, you know, to, to manage the superintendent. Does the, does the joint board have joint authority for matters like this? Or is it, is that usurping the individual board's authority?
So it's kind of, it's what you, the first part of what you said, it's a good question, Neil. The first, here's my understanding of it, but other people should feel free to pipe in. I think exactly what you said at the beginning is right, that individual boards don't supervise the superintendent. It's only as a joint board that we supervise the superintendent. So that's why this is a policy that really, you know, has to be at the joint board level. Because we're essentially saying that he would have special emergency authority to change any policy or procedure that fit the circumstances. Until that joint board, which is the only group that can actually give that authority to him, will come back together and say, you know, that authority is done, or yes, we want you to keep that authority for a while longer because we're still in an emergency circumstance.
But it's your understanding though, that the joint board can give and take away that kind of authority, right? It's not, it doesn't have to go to individual boards. The joint board actually has that authority. Cause I thought that the.
It's, it's interesting because it, it's, it's a little bit, and maybe this is something we need like a Barrett Christina to weigh in on this. I think this policy ultimately is going to have to be ratified or approved at each individual board level. But, but it's a policy that we want to have to be, this is in particular policy that you, that you need to be the same across the board. If, if it's not the same, then we don't really have a policy for that. It doesn't help to have part of the group say, it's okay that as soon as the joint board meets, they can make a decision about this. So it's, I mean, I think policies do have to be approved at the board level. The, the individual school board level, not the joint board level. But this type of authority is, is one because of the supervision part. It's one of the few things that the joint board can do.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else, Patrick?
Yes. So that was it for the policy committee. I did want to add a note about DEI. It's a great group. I had a chance to go to the first meeting. One of the things that came up, which I know Neil and Sarah had mentioned before, as, as our, the prior representatives of the committee, was an interest of that committee in having our board receive some form of training. That came up again, I think, one of the things that Drew and Steve put on a spreadsheet of activities that we wanted to schedule. It has not been scheduled, obviously. I did have a conversation with Twain, sort of post George Floyd incident for about an hour and a half. We talked about a number of things and one of the things that came up was, was her personal desire to see the board trained ASAP. And I don't know what that means. It's up to us and how we do that. She also said that she knows some folks who could be good trainers. She, her initial sense was that she did, it's something she didn't want to put on Miriam to do as a member of the committee. But she thought the board would benefit from having an outside trainer, but she didn't recommend anyone to me. She said that, that that's something that she could provide. And I said, the more information the board has, the better to make a decision. So I anticipate that she's going to have some information to give to us that we would share and decide what we want to do with that in terms of when, now we'd want to schedule some sort of a training at whatever time. But there was a request, at least from the committee chair, to try to do that sooner than later, given the sort of current political, cultural, societal context of what's happening.
Great. Good idea. Thank you. Any questions for Patrick? All right, Patty Saret.
I don't know. So security, I don't think there's been another meeting for a couple of months. The superintendent evaluation committee met last night. It was really just a effort to compile all the different districts, I mean, all the different towns. Feedback, including ours. This is information that'll be presented at the next joint board meeting when that gets scheduled. Patrick, did you say that there was one on the 15th? Because our committee chair was unsure when that was going to be scheduled.
I got a, I just had a note from David today because it was a question I raised and he said tentatively, they're looking at that date, but it's not confirmed.
Yeah. So that, that information will be shared in similar process as last year. David will do his presentation. Tom Campbell will be part of it. And then we'll have, you know, our feedback that we share, but that's it.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Patty? Chair's report. I have nothing to report. All right. Any questions for me? Moving on. Esther, I have a question for you, Esther. Did, did I miss it? Or was there a letter you were going to mention in public session today?
Yep. Under new business personnel resignation. And then I need to go into non-public for another matter that I received last night.
Okay. So Esther, so Patrick has something to, to talk about. And then, so Esther, why don't you do that, the, your item, then Patrick can do his, and then we'll go to non-public if that's okay?
Sure. I just asked the board to consider accepting a letter of resignation from Mark Robital. That's a, he wrote a very nice letter. It is with my utmost respect and gratitude that I offer this letter of resignation to SAU 16. I have been granted the opportunity to serve the Bedford School District and Peter Woodbury School as their assistant principal. This is a move in my career that I'm ready to take on, and I am grateful for all the preparation and support that I have received from SAU 16 and the Exeter School District. I came to Lincoln Street fresh out of my master's program from UNH in 2013. Exeter has become a second home to me and I remember and cherish all the friendships that I've made over my seven years as a fifth grade teacher. I look forward to my new position and responsibilities. I hope and look forward to future opportunities to connect and possibly collaborate with SAU 16 leadership. Again, thank you for the opportunity to serve the students of Exeter. It has been one of the greatest privileges of my life. Sincerely, Mark Robital. We will miss him greatly. I don't know Drew, I just know he's taught many, many students very, very well and is well respected and well admired by many, myself included. So I certainly responded back to his letter I received last night with sadness, but with happiness for him as he, you know, pursues the next step in his career as an administrator. So I asked the board to approve that and accept that letter of resignation.
So can I, can I make the motion since my son Teddy had him and just loved the guy? So my motion is to accept with regret, great thanks and best. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Roll call. Don Bolins.
Hi.
Sarah Edwards.
Hi.
Patrick O'Dea. Patty Saret.
Aye.
Blankensai, motion passes. Patrick O'Dea.
So just to, I just wanted to put this on the agenda as a point of, of old business that, and Neil, maybe you have some update about what's going on with this. But my understanding and in talking to Esther was that, and, and from the last joint board meeting, was that this issue was raised at the joint board, whether or not there was a need to continue to have a delegation of authority to the chairs. And my understanding from David is that his intention was to not, he didn't need that authority anymore, essentially, that he didn't need to make decisions with a smaller group of just joint chairs. If there was a need to make a decision, he would make it with the joint board. And so if that's the case, then it seems like we would want to make a motion. And I guess I'm making that motion, although I'll wait to make it, see if there's any more information. But a motion about sort of rescinding or extinguishing that delegation of authority.
Yeah, I mean, the only new information is Esther, Esther talked to David and she sent us an email saying, confirm that that's his plan and we don't need the authority anymore. So you want to make a motion, Patrick?
Sure. So I'll make a, a motion that we end the delegation of authority to our chair to make decisions on behalf of the board, as noted before in the April decision.
So I'm going to second that because I, I agree. I don't think, you know, especially now, we don't need to delegate authority. I second. Roll call vote. Any discussion?
Oh, I, I have a question. So this is recommended by Dr. Ryan.
Right.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Don Bolins.
Aye.
Sarah Edwards.
Aye.
Patrick O'Dea. Obviously. Patty Saret, sorry, my bad. Neil Blankensai, motion passes. Esther, we have to go into, we have to go into non-public and then adjourn later, right?
Yes, we have to go into non-public, then come back into public, make a motion, depending on what the board decides. And I would ask Drew to stay into non-public with me, please.
So what's, I don't have the, what's the statute we have to cite for this? I don't have it in my packet.
It is RSA 91A3 and it is under C.
Okay. So I'm going to make.
Excuse me, Neil. Molly had her hand up.
Sorry, Molly.
Just quickly, before you guys go into non-public, I just forgot to say one item. Now that we're back in the office, we're going to ask you guys to come in and sign the manifest again. So I plan to be in the office Tuesdays and Wednesdays and then working from home part-time. So if you guys would be able to come in and sign the manifest going forward instead of email approval. And then the other thing that will be waiting next to the manifest is it, it's called the MS-22 report. It's the exact same information as the MS-26 that you guys already signed when we did budgets. It's just another regulatory report that we have to fill out, but the information's the exact same as on the 26.
All right, thanks.
Molly, why is it that it's not possible to continue with email approval? I understand that you're in the office now, but is there a regulatory reason why we can't do that?
I can ask the auditors if they'll continue or if we can continue using email approval. They did say that during the COVID-19 that they would allow it. And since we're back in the office now and resuming partially normal processes, we've asked for people to come and sign if they can, but I can still send them out via email and doc, and document email approvals.
Yeah. Molly, I, I believe that since the board isn't meeting as an entity, that we still can sign electronically, but you can double check me.
Okay, yeah, I'll double check with the auditors, but, um, if you want to come in and sign physically, we've had some boards prefer to do that. You can, or we can send them out electronically too.
Thank you.
The MS-26, that we do need the actual signature.
Okay. So we should, we should stop by our office on, is it Tuesdays and Thursdays?
Tuesdays and Wednesdays, but the, there's no receptionist, so you'll just need to call me.
So if, if we don't get you, would you just ping us with an email and let us know we need to do it?
Sure.
Thank you. All right. I'm going to move, we go into non-public and for the reason, for the statute cited. Is there a second?
Before, before you make the, the motion, can you just say a little bit more about the motion? Just generally what that involves? I don't have the statute in front of me to have a sense of why we're going into non-public.
It's under C, which is matters, which discussed in public would likely affect adversely the reputation of the person.
Okay, thank you. That's all I needed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Don, Don Bolins.
Aye.
Sarah Edwards.
Aye.
Patrick O'Dea.
Aye.
Patty Saret.
Aye.
Neil Blankensai. All right. So it's, it's the board, Esther and Drew, right?